Welcome everyone. Thank you for attending this City Council Primary Candidate Forum. All candidates for the City Council seats for which there is a primary are here with the exception of Larry Hotchkiss, who is unable to make it tonight. That includes the candidates for the At-Large and District 1 seats. My name's Mary Rice and I'm President of League of Women Voters Bloomington. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization that never endorses any political party or candidate. Our purpose in hosting this forum is to provide you, the public, with the opportunity to learn more about the candidates so that you can make informed voting decisions. Your vote is your power and will result in your voice being heard. The primary election is Tuesday, August 13th, and early voting has already begun here in Bloomington Civic Plaza. We hope that this forum, as well as the candidate videos that will soon be posted on our website and that of the city, and replayed on Bloomington TV, will provide you with information that you need to assist you in making your voting decision. Thank you to the audience for attending tonight's forum. Please write your questions for the candidates on cards and pass the cards to one of our card collectors. Card collectors, could you please wave? If you have a question that's specific to either the At-Large or the District 1 seat, please so state on the card. Otherwise, we'll assume that it's a general question for all the candidates. I want to also thank you, to thank the candidates, for the time and effort that you've dedicated to running for office and for participating in this forum. In these days of political polarization, we in Bloomington can be proud of all of our candidates for the efforts they make to run positive campaigns and for demonstrating the civility in this forum that's becoming of the office they seek and that reflects the attitudes and demeanor of our community as a whole. We ask that the members of the audience not clap, cheer, or otherwise do anything that may disrupt the forum or the recording process. Thank you also to the members of Bloomington League of Women Voters for planning this event, to the City of Bloomington for the use of the Black Box Theater, to Bloomington TV for recording and broadcasting this forum for Bloomington TV. This forum will also be posted for viewing online with League of Women Voters Bloomington on our website, on the City of Bloomington website, and on YouTube. This forum will be rebroadcast multiple times on Bloomington TV. I'd now like to introduce you to Lonnie Skrentner, who is our moderator tonight. Lonnie's a highly skilled moderator who's moderated many league forums. She's a member and past president of the Adina League of Women Voters. Lonnie will now identify the rules of the forum and will introduce you to the candidates.
Want to add my welcome to Mary's. As she said, the league is all about informed voters, and that's the people sitting in front of us. Before we get started, please take out your device and make sure that it is either on silent or turned off so that it does not come to get us during the forum. The views expressed in this forum will be those of the candidate and not those of the League of Women Voters. The fact that the league is sponsoring this forum in no way implies support for any candidate. The rules. Speaking order was set before the forum, and speaking will rotate between candidates. And I'm going to fess up that I've ne-- although I've done a lot of these, I've never done one where there's a district and At-Large and that some of the questions only may be for some of you. I'm going to deal with that somehow. But it means that I will be calling the names of each candidate when it is their turn to answer. Each candidate will have a minute for opening statement and closing statement, and one minute to answer each of the questions. We have league volunteers who are timing candidate responses and will hold up signs when candidates have 30 seconds, 15 seconds, and when they must stop. Candidates, please take note of where those cards are and keep your eye on them so that the teacher doesn't have to take you off at the knees. This forum will also have a couple of lightning rounds where candidates will be requested to answer a question briefly. Yes or no, because hopefully a fairly simple sentence. Having done this before, I have heard the longest run-on sentences in history, so my eyes are on you all. Audience members, if you need more cards, if you have other questions, please also raise your hand and the volunteers can bring you more cards. LWV Bloomington determines which questions will be asked and attempts in good faith to cover as many of the topics of interest as indicated by submitted questions. All written questions become the property of the League of Bloomington. I notice, at least it looks like you're all behaving yourselves, and I see no candidate buttons or shirts or any of those kinds of things, and that's good. A reminder that this forum is being video recorded, and I'm going to ask you to hold your applause until the end of the forum. Candidates, please make sure that you speak directly into your microphone so that your responses are heard and picked up for the video. As Mary Rice said, all of the candidates for City Council except one are here with us tonight. Running At-Large are Jenna Carter, Brian Clemmons, and Judy Galena. Running for District 1 are Jonathan McClellan, Dwayne Loman, and Al Nord. It is now time for opening statements. Each candidate gets a minute, beginning with Ms. Carter.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. My name is Jenna Carter, and I am thrilled to be here tonight, running for the Bloomington City Council At-Large seat. First, I want to thank the League of Women Voters for organizing this opportunity for candidates and voters alike, so thank you. And I want to provide a little bit of background about myself. So I live in Bloomington with my husband, Mike, and our two kids, Dylan, who is eight, and Evelyn, who is five, and our dog Luna, I can't forget about her. And I actually grew up a military brat. Both of my parents were active duty the majority of my childhood, retired when I was in high school, so I graduated from a small town in southwest Iowa, went to Iowa State, and then moved up here for grad school about 11 years ago. So I've been working on improving community health across our state for the past 10 years. And as a Bloomington resident, I have served on the Board of Directors for Veep, one of our local nonprofits, I currently do. I serve on the leadership team for the Bloomington Housing Coalition, and I volunteer in our schools. I'm so excited to be here tonight to answer the questions that you have, and if I don't, please let me know, and I'm happy to have follow-up conversations. Thank you.
Mr. Clemmons.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Brian Clemmons, and most people call me Clem. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for putting this on. I'm a lifelong Bloomington resident. I've been here since I can remember, at least, and I can tell you that I love Bloomington. I've grown up here, went to the schools here, played BA sports here, went to college here, I started businesses here, and I got married here. Everything about me has been Bloomington. I've been on the fire department here for about 19 years, getting close to retirement on that one, but I can tell you that so many great things have happened in Bloomington, and what I'm passionate about is really maintaining what we have in Bloomington and looking for great ways to improve it as well. I want my children to have the upbringing I had and to have the great memories of this town that I've had. So thank you for the opportunity to run, and hopefully you can learn some more about me tonight.
Ms. Galena.
Good evening. And then you say.
Good evening.
Come on, good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you. I'm obviously the oldest person up here, so I'll tell you a couple of things about old Bloomington. We moved here when I was 10 years old. At that time, there was one stoplight on 98th and Lyndale that was set for Bloomington. 494 was 78th Street. The bookmobile came once a month, and that was pretty exciting. Oh, 30 seconds. My professional background is in human services and human resources. Since the days that I noted above, Bloomington has emerged as one of the largest cities in Minnesota. We have great schools and a stable government, and I have to quit now, I'll tell you the rest of my story later.
Thank you. Mr. Loman.
Thank you. I want to thank the, my fellow League of Women Voters for all of your work, for all of you, for being here this evening, also the police that have to work outside to keep us safe here. We are creating a community of choice in Bloomington. Our city is in the midst of transpiration, transformation from the boom times of the last century. Bloomington has been known for the Mall of America, the Bloomington Strip, and the Fireman's Tournament, and so many other activities and events. Unfortunately, too often, when our city gets older, it becomes time that our community take a look at reinvesting into our future by reflecting on the past. Our city is blessed with so many opportunities that is critical, that we are discerning about our next steps that we take. Our infrastructure as a whole is aging, and the expenses that we face will be instrumental in that next chapter of Bloomington's existence. As a two-term City Council member and as active member of Bloomington who's been born and raised here, I look forward to having that conversation with you this evening.
Mr. McClellan.
Hello, my name is Jonathan McClellan, and I'm running to be your City Council member here in District 1. I would like to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum, my family, and I have lived in Bloomington for over a decade. My children attend Bloomington Public Schools. I've served on the Human Rights Commission for both Bloomington and Richfield, and the District Diversity Advisory Council for the Bloomington Public School District. I currently advance criminal justice reform and restorative justice and public safety legislation at the Capitol. I am a retired firefighter who was injured in the line of duty saving a young man's life. I'm running because I believe that it's time for Bloomington to chart a new course for our city, one that focuses on respect, dignity, authentic listening, and engagement. What I have been hearing in our community is what I have based my platform on, and you can view that at mcclellanforbloomington.com. If there's something that we do not talk about tonight, please feel free to come up and speak to me after the forum. I would be honored to earn your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. DeNord.
Good evening. My name's Al Nord. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum. I'm running for City Council District 1. I'm a lifelong resident of Bloomington, and I also own a small business located in Bloomington. I attended Bloomington Public Schools and graduated from John F. Kennedy. I've been married for 23 years to my lovely wife, Dawn. We have two children that both attend Kennedy High School. One just graduated this year, the other will graduate next year. I'm running for council to help represent all the hard-working people who would like to be more involved in the process of running the city, but can't find time after working all day and raising their families. My primary reason for running is to protect private property rights and for both residential and commercial. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on now to audience questions, and we'll start this first round with Mr. Nord. And right now, we're asking questions of all the candidates. People talk about East Bloomington and West Bloomington. Are there really differences between the two sides of the city? And if so, what should the City Council do to address those differences? Mr. Nord.
I think if you're in high school, there's a big difference between east and west side of Bloomington, but as far as living in Bloomington, I think they both have great amenities, and I don't see any problems with one or the other.
Mr. McClellan.
I would say that it's important to understand where the east-west came from. And the east-west came from marketers that tried to market West Bloomington as prestigious West Bloomington to get homeowners into that area. I would learn this little nugget from while I was door-knocking and had the opportunity to speak to a lifelong resident here in Bloomington who taught me that. I would like to see investment in Bloomington on 98th and Lyndale, and I would like to see the City of Bloomington develop a downtown there, and that's what I have.
Mr. Loman.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. Yes, no, maybe? Yes, sorry. Okay. I'll go ahead then. So every morning that I wake up, I open up the door, and I look outside on my lawn, and there's one Bloomington sign there, and it kind of reminds me of how important that was. I remember when I was in elementary school and went to intermediate school, our entire school kind of came together, so folks from across the city were together. And when we look at our future challenges in terms of how we're going to work on trying to revise our infrastructure, we need to work as one city. We need to work together. We need to harness the entire totality of our entire community, and that's why with our City of Bloomington, we've put together a strategic plan that focuses on that, that we're one Bloomington. Whether it be around equity and inclusion, or really any of the policies that we're working on, we're really trying to make sure that our entire city is seen as one Bloomington. Now, I grew up and went to Kennedy High School, and we moved a little further west in the city, and so our kid will be going to Jefferson.
Ms. Galena.
Over time, in the past, I think there was a real feeling of east and west Bloomington. East was tougher. It had more affordable housing, which was a good deal, not as well-educated and working class. And as he said, west Bloomington was prestigious west Bloomington. I don't see as much of that anymore, I'm pleased to report. I see more people just talking about living in Bloomington and being proud of it. So I'm glad that that is on its way out, and I look forward to it getting better and better. Thank you.
Mr. Clemmons.
I grew up in East Bloomington, so I'll tell you, yes, there's a difference, and the difference is very real. Just the housing itself is 20 years older than it is on the west side, but when you look at the quality of the people, I think you find people from all walks of life, and there's good people and there's terrible people, and they all look the same to me. I think that when you look at the development of this town and what needs to happen, revitalizing East Bloomington needs to be something that we look at heavily. There's a lot of rundown, trodden buildings and businesses, there's places that just need some love, and there's been a struggle at the city level to get developers to invest in the east side of Bloomington. There's a lot of great things happening right now to encourage that to happen, and so I will say, yes, there's a difference, and it's something that we need to look at and try and make everybody kind of feel a little bit better regardless of where they live.
Thank you. Ms. Carter.
Yes, thank you for the question. So Bloomington is an incredible city, and we all know that, we love living here, but there are significant differences between east and west Bloomington, and you can see it when you drive down the street. And then, as somebody with a public health background, I've actually looked at health data across our city. And as I have mapped neighborhood-level health data, so they call it the ZIP code data, the lowest life expectancy that I could find in Bloomington was actually right by Kennedy High School, and the highest was actually right by Jefferson. I can't make that up. And there was a 10-year difference in life expectancy for our kids growing up in those neighborhoods. And people ask me why that happens, and from a healthcare background, I can tell you, 80% of what's driving that is where people are living. And so we do need reinvestment and redevelopment in our neighborhoods, we need more affordable housing options, we need transportation options for people who may not be able to drive, we need clean and safe neighborhoods, good police and fire. So we, all of these things, I'm being told to stop, I could go on about this one for a while, so if you want to have more conversations, let me know.
Later, right? All right, this again is to all candidates, and we will begin with Mr. Clemmons. What is your position on ranked choice voting specifically for the City of Bloomington? Whether you are in favor of or opposed to it, what factual support do you have for your position?
So ranked choice voting is something that I learned about recently and need to learn more about. I can tell you that the cost of primaries in this city is significant to carry on two elections. It takes a lot of work and a lot of effort and a lot of money. So from that perspective, I do believe in ranked choice voting. I do also believe that there are things with ranked choice voting that need to get looked at and make sure that the value of the ranking of each of those votes and the balance of those things is fair for all.
Thank you. Ms. Carter.
So I am supportive of ranked choice voting in Bloomington. If you look at our current system with a primary and a general election, we have extremely low voter turnout in the primary election, and so a couple thousand people are really driving the outcomes of our elections. And so the system we have right now isn't working well. I think ranked choice voting is a much better option, and when you look at cities and states that have adopted ranked choice voting across the country, we're seeing better outcomes, we're seeing more diverse representation, we're seeing more positive campaigning. I do agree with what one of the mayoral candidates said before, that we have pretty positive campaigns in Bloomington, and I'm sure it will continue. And then when you do look at the cost of running two elections, you know, it's important to be thinking about how we can be more responsible with those dollars and those resources that we have.
Thank you. Ms. Galena.
I am supporting ranked, excuse me, voting for three reasons. All candidates get a chance to be looked at. If you have the primary, for example, our group of, what are we?
Four.
Four. Two will go away without a chance of the whole voting population having a chance to vote for them. If it was ranked, everybody has a chance to vote for everybody, and that feels more fair to me. And also the cost factor, not having to have a primary. The third thing is not necessarily positive or negative, but change is hard, and I know that it can be confusing. I think there needs to be some fairly heavy education going on about that.
Thank you. Ms. Galena, I'd remind you to speak directly into your microphone.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. McClellan.
Yes, I do support ranked choice voting. I think it would allow more buy-in from the community, it's more community-oriented, it would cause candidates to run more cleaner and appropriate campaigns, and it would also have the candidates have to reach out more because they have to look at who their second choice is, the community would. So I support it because of that. I also support it because it'll allow more people who would normally not get into politics or run for office be able to do that.
Thank you. Mr. Loman.
Thank you. I think what's important about ranked choice voting is that whatever choice we decide to make with ranked choice, I think that whatever that solution is, has a component that 50% or more of that person who wins would be the best solution for ranked choice. I also think it's important that the public as a whole get the opportunity to be able to vote on a ballot initiative on ranked choice. Certainly, I've seen strong evidence as to why we should support that ranked choice voting, and there are also some reasons that I have some concerns about it. So I stand like with one of the earlier mayoral candidates, wanting to dive more into the information before I make a final conclusion on this, but I think we really have to take seriously this ranked choice voting as a solution to our issues with low turnout in elections.
Thank you. Mr. Nord.
As of now, I would be against ranked choice voting. I'm not real well-versed on completely how the ranked works, but to me, it seems like the first candidate of everybody kind of gets thrown out, so then the second-most popular person is always going to be the one that gets elected, even though he may not be the best candidate to be running. So as of now, I would be against it.
Thank you. We'll go to a quick, lightning round question here, and I remind you, yes or no, and a quick because. And we will start with Mr. Nord. Should the Minnesota River Bottom Trail be paved?
I'm an avid mountain biker, and I really enjoy that trail down there, and it's not used all that much, and I think paving it is not going to really increase the usage of it, and it's just going to cost a lot of money and be flooded out every year and just need constant repair.
Mr. McClellan.
And it's too expensive, the community don't want it, and it's important that your representative represent the community.
Mr. Loman.
Thank you. Well, obviously, this is a state choice. The state has voted on this, and so again, I would, as the earlier candidate said, ask you to reach out to the DNR because to ask us seven council members to make a decision that's against what's already been stated in both the state law. It's a tricky situation to be in, so that's my response.
Ms. Galena.
No, I'm against it. It just seems really antithetical that you're getting back to nature, biking, walking, whatever, but you're going to do it on pavement. I don't think so.
Mr. Clemmons.
As a, I had a brother in a wheelchair for about 32 years, he just passed away, and I can tell you that his inability to get down and have a picnic or go through the woods with us was difficult on our family, to do things that other people couldn't do from an accessibility standpoint. I think that pavement is necessary. From a financial standpoint, it's a state project, it's not a Bloomington project. So keep that in mind. When you worry about the money, it's state money. Thank you.
Ms. Carter.
I am not supportive of paving the river trails. You know, I am an advocate for transportation issues, trails, biking, walking, for the disability community and for seniors, but when you look at what's been happening to the paved trails in the river bottom, especially about around Fort Snelling, I think from a practical perspective, a financial perspective, and an environmental perspective, it doesn't make a lot of sense, and we have a ton of need in our city in terms of increasing ADA compliance and other issues.
Thank you.
Very long sentence, I'm sorry.
It's all right, you got at least a C. I'm going to combine a couple of difficult questions here. The concept, the theme here is Bloomington as a welcoming, friendly, and also safe city. So is Bloomington a friendly place for black and brown people, for LGBT, for immigrants? And within that, city governments and state governments are being asked to cooperate with ICE where immigrants are concerned. So what does Bloomington do about being welcoming, and where does ICE fit into that? And we begin with Ms. Carter.
It's a really big question for one minute, just saying. So I think that the city has been taking great strides in terms of diversity, equity, inclusion, and it has a lot more to do. If you look at our leadership, our boards and commissions, the makeup of our city staff, you know, that all is really symbolic when you think about living in Bloomington and being here. If you look across our community, we know it's really diverse, so we should see more diversity in our city leadership. Meeting communities where they're at, going to community events, I mean, there are things that facilitate relationship building between the city and the community that we could be doing. Sorry, I'm really, really trying to do this fast. So as it relates to ICE and the city or the police departments' collaboration or coordination with ICE, you know, I think that Chief Potts, under his leadership, has been taking the right approach, and I agree with it. It's not local law enforcement's role to enforce federal immigration policy, although I think that if anybody is breaking the law, they should be treated the same as anybody else that's breaking the law, so.
Thank you. Mr. Clemmons.
I don't think Bloomington is an incredibly welcoming city to people of different nationalities. My wife is Egyptian. I can tell you that I walk into a bar or restaurant with her, and the record scratches, and everybody turns to look, and I tell her it's because she's beautiful. And, but you know, it's something that, I grew up, there was five African-American people in my class when I graduated from Kennedy in 1992, and the change that's happened just at that school, it's wonderful to me. It's wonderful that my children are going to grow up in a diverse population, and I think that we need to do more to engage people from all walks of life, regardless of its color, race, gender, you know, alignment, it doesn't matter. We need to be inclusive. When it comes to ICE, you know, there's good people in the community that are doing hard work, and if you can find a way to let them work hard, then let's let the federal government take care of it. Thanks.
Ms. Galena.
To a certain extent, I think Bloomington is welcoming, but you know, we're mostly of us white, and what does that say? I see the welcoming being done by the earlier minority, black and brown people that are here and have started their neighborhoods, and the new ones coming in join them. So I don't see it as an across-the-board welcoming, and I'd like to see that happen. In terms of cooperation with ICE, I would promote minimal cooperation. That means whatever cooperation. That means whatever is legal and required and no more.
Mr. Lohman?
Thank you. I support the statement that our city council had made, strongly supporting immigration and folks who are immigrants within our community. It's important that everyone feel safe in our community. And that's why one of our strategic priorities is around equity and inclusion. When we looked at our citizen survey, 95% of first district respondents rated that they felt safe in their neighborhoods. And we need to make sure that we continue to support policies as we have on the council around these ideas of folks feeling safe. Now, certainly, I'm an example of a person who's grown up in the city of Bloomington, and certainly I've seen things that have changed over the time that I've been here. But I got to tell you one thing, I feel very welcome here in this city. And we've got to make sure that no matter where you're coming from, who you're a part of, or what you're a part of, that you feel welcome in this city. And I think that for the most part, this city is a very welcoming community. We've got our opportunities, but I feel very welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Nord?
Bloomington's a very diverse community. Like Mr. Clemmons, I grew up, there was just a handful of minorities in our school system. And now it's, Bloomington Kennedy is super diverse. And my kids grow up, and they're welcoming of everybody. And I don't even think they've had an I at a different race or religion or anything. So I think Bloomington is very welcoming in that aspect. As far as ICE goes, I certainly don't want Bloomington to be known as a sanctuary city, but I don't think that we should be going out and trying to round up any immigrants or illegals.
Thank you. Mr. McClellan?
My wife is Somali. And when we first moved to the community, I used to get hate mail to my house. I reported it to the police, and I did not feel safe. I did not feel safe for my children, my wife. When I went to work, my shifts were 24-hour shifts because I was working with the fire department. And I did not feel safe. But what I was hopeful is that I could call the police department, and I could tell them what was going on, and I could trust that they would be there in my time of need or my family's time of need. I do believe that the city is getting better. And I look forward to working with the city of Bloomington. That's why I joined the Human Rights Commission, to try to figure out what I could do, because I do believe in a participatory government, and that's why I'm here.
Thank you. We have a question now that is aimed simply at the at-large candidates. So we will begin with Ms. Galina. What would you do to include a broader swath of residents, LGBTQ, Black, Brown, older, younger, in Bloomington's government and decision-making? So how do you bring more people into the process?
I think it's education. A while back, the Bloomington Police were doing the cops, what was it, coffee with cops. And it was wonderful, the turnout. It was at like coffee shops, whatever. The turnout was wonderful. And again, it was kind of a meeting of the residents and the police. I think some small group kinds of things like that are the way to start and then branch out from there.
Thank you. Ms. Carter?
Can you repeat the question?
What would you do to include a broader swath of residents in Bloomington's government and decision-making? So how do you bring people into the process?
Thank you. So first, I think we need to look at our boards and commissions process. It is not a very transparent or easy process to understand. I've had my own personal experiences trying to apply and missing deadlines that were, you know, not knowing when deadlines are. I think that there's a lot of opportunity to look at a lot of these systems and the processes in our city to make sure that we are being transparent and we are communicating when opportunities arise. And then when people do apply, I think that we need to have an interview process when there are boards and commission seats open. And then when we look at the makeup of our boards and commissions, we should make sure that at minimum, we have geographic representation from across our city. So for example, the HRA only has, currently has West Side people, and it's Housing and Development Authority, which makes really big, important decisions for our community. So I think that we need to start doing an analysis of our boards and commissions because they do have a lot of power.
Mr. Clemmons?
It sounds like a two-sided question to me, so I'm going to answer it that way. There's the government reaching out to encourage participation from all different people and all different walks of life. And I think the city of Bloomington, was mentioned earlier, was one of three cities that showed up at the pride parade. So I think there's steps being taken already to make sure that there's support for everyone from the city. As far as getting more diversity in the government, the hiring practice have changed at the city of Bloomington. They're working on that. I do agree with Jenna, there is a lack of diversity on many, many of the boards at the city, and that should be looked at as well. But to open up the door and make sure people feel comfortable enough to come in, voice their concerns, contact whatever city council person it ends up being, and having those open lines of communication in a safe space to do that, I think is something that we need to work toward.
Thank you. And now we have a question for the District One candidates. All of us have dealt with some level of hardship and adversity in our lives. The question is, how have you dealt with hardship or adversity in your life, and how will those dealings help you as a city council member? And we'll begin with Mr. McClellan.
I had lost my parents. My father was a Marine, my mother was a homemaker, and I lost my parents early. I became homeless at the age of 15, and I got into trouble as a teenager with the law. But more importantly, I learned from my mistakes. I had to dig deep, pull up my bootstraps, and figure it out. And that's what I did with the help of mentors in the community, Chair of Public Safety for Minneapolis, the former mayor of Richfield. They reached in and helped me. I started a business where I employed at-risk youth, and I worked with the police department in Minneapolis and different organizations to help bridge the gap between the police and the community. So my resilience comes from my story, and my story is profound.
Thank you. Mr. Lohman?
Thank you. Well, I grew up here in Bloomington, and what was difficult is that I ended up growing up in a single-parent family here in Bloomington. It was very difficult trying to get food week to week. And we ended up using a lot of the programs that were here in this city. My dad was in the military, and served in Vietnam and Korea, and really wasn't a part of my life. And so the folks that were around in this city really came together to help support and really groom a young man who was looking for a place to really kind of give back. They got me involved with the internship program, where I got to intern with the city as a city planner. And then I moved on and was able to go to study planning over at Augsburg College. And then I was sent overseas from Rotary, from the Bloomington Rotary, for all my work. And so certainly, we all have those stories. And part of governing is being able to listen to all those stories.
Thank you. Mr. Nord?
That's a tough one. I grew up in Bloomington, and I, my childhood was fantastic. I mean, there was no hardship growing up. I know we had times that we struggled, but my parents would never let you know that we were in hard times. So I'd say the most hardship I have had to go through is back in 2008, when the economy tanked and my business was failing. And having to lay off employees is probably the hardest thing I've ever had to do in my life, just the look in their eyes and the devastation that they felt of having to no job in the worst economic times that we've ever faced. So that is a hard choice to make, and I think it would help me making difficult choices on the council.
Thank you. Think now about city streets and your responsibility as city government. Are Bloomington's streets safe for bicycles and pedestrians? And within that, what do you think about speed limits being reduced for residential streets? And we'll begin with Mr. Lohman.
Thank you. When we look at the surveys, our residents are telling us that our streets are safe. But certainly, when I look at them, sometimes I feel like, wait a minute, you know, we could do this a little bit differently. So I certainly support us moving some of our bike trails from on the main streets to some of the side streets. I just think that that's just a safer place for folks to be biking throughout the city. Certainly, we've seen in our surveys that people would like to have more trails throughout the city, and we need to make sure that we are doing that. In terms of our funding, we are in great shape for our PMP program, our pavement management program. We've even added in through other resources, ways of taking care of our trails that are out there. And we've seen throughout our surveys that that is an important priority for the residents of Bloomington. So we will continue to make sure that those streets are safe and making sure that our policies reflect that.
Mr. Nord?
I think the streets are in fantastic shape. I do have to admit that I don't like all the bike lanes on the main roads that we have. They could be moved over to some side streets, like Mr. Lohman said. The, I mean, the funding that we have for the roads is great. The only time you really sense a bad road is in the spring, after the snow is melting. And it seems like they're never going to fix the potholes, but they're just waiting for the asphalt to be able to be made because it's still too cold. So I think the streets and the bike lanes are there.
Mr. McClellan?
I believe we can do better. I live on a corner of France and 102nd Street. Kids walk by my house every day, and I can't tell you how many kids stop by my home concerned that they're not going to make it across the street. I see accidents there every day. And recently, I spoke to a group of seniors who were concerned that they have to walk across Old Shakopee Road, and they're worried about being hit by cars because cars are going so fast. This has been a problem that has lasted for at least 10 years, and it hasn't been solved yet. I believe that we can do better, and we will fix it.
Thank you. Ms. Galina?
I've noted a fair amount of antipathy between bicycle riders and cars. And both sides are guilty. The cars, you know, now there's lanes for bikes that didn't use to be there. And so it's like, well, what are they doing here? And the bikes, some of the bike bicyclists kind of taunt the cars, you know, get it over a little bit here and whatever. So yes, one of the things that was mentioned was not quite the busy streets. And also, I do think adjusting the speed limit, maybe from like where it's 35 to 30 or 45 to 40, might help people settle down a little bit.
Thank you. Mr. Clemmons?
Forms of alternate transportation are extremely important in a city of our size. Although I can say that the bike lanes that are now on Portland, Icalet, 106th Street and beyond, I think there's a better location for them. We have a transportation issue in our city. You can't get across from one side of town to the other. 494 is a mess. 35W is tore up. Normandale just got done being torn up, and now France is torn up. And to get people just to get home, pick your kid up, and get them to a nightly activity proves impossible. It took me 26 minutes to get from my house onto 35W last night. And so getting around needs to be a priority. While, yes, there needs to be alternate methods and alternate places for people who want to use bikes and scooters and anything else to get around, but I do think that we need to get our lanes of traffic back. Thanks.
Ms. Carter?
So I've been knocking on hundreds and hundreds of doors, and street safety comes up over and over and over again. Just the other night, I was knocking in a neighborhood by Old Shakopee, and there's a, you know, crosswalk over there. And every single person I talked to at every house talked about their concern at the speed of traffic. And that day, three people were hitting that crosswalk, two kids on bikes and an older gentleman who were coming back from the cub. So we definitely have safety issues happening in our community, and we do need a transportation system that works for everybody that wants to get around our city, whether you are driving, whether you are biking, whether you are walking, or maybe you are relying on public transit because you choose to or you need to. The city actually has a really great plan for our transportation system. It needs to be implemented. And in implementation, we need more coordination and collaboration across the various jurisdictions that oversee our roads. So we have city roads, but we have county, state, federal, and we have a lot of jurisdictions that need to be working together.
Thank you. We'll take time now for another lightning round. Yes, no, because, be done. We'll start with Mr. Clemmons. Do you support the development of a new community center?
I do, but I believe a new senior center is more important. The community center location that's currently being considered takes away existing amenities, and I don't think that that's a great way to improve the city. Finding a location that can not only improve the city, like a blighted location, as well as keep existing amenities and watching the budget on it. It needs to be explored. At some point, there does need to be a community center, but in the short term, a senior center is more important. Thank you.
Ms. Carter?
Yes, I support a community center, and I believe that if we're investing millions of dollars of taxpayer resources, that it should be a community center that meets the youngest of our community to the oldest. We need our senior facilities, our senior amenities, but we also need to make sure that we're meeting the needs of families with young kids in our community and everybody in between.
Ms. Galina?
I have some real concerns about the health and safety of our seniors being at Creekside. It was a school built in '58, '59. I'm sure it's full of asbestos. I did check with the city planning office, and they said the asbestos only becomes an issue when they start knocking things down. But I'm still concerned that a population that could be more vulnerable and not quite as hardy are in that daily. And they're so, those seniors are so loyal about the programs there. I support a new community center that is for seniors and everybody else. It doesn't have to be a Taj Mahal. We have
Okay.
Oh, did you stop me, tell me to stop?
No, this is lightning round, though.
Oh.
You now hit your third sentence, so.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I was, this was one I really feel strongly about.
Trying to make them obey the rules. Mr. Nord?
Yes, I would support a new community center. I think maybe it should be tuned more towards a senior center. My mom passed away from Alzheimer's 10 years ago, and my father used that community center for their daycare for Alzheimer's patients. And so I would support a new community center.
Mr. McClellan?
I do support a community center. However, I do have some reservations about it. I am concerned about what kind of resources we're pulling away from the school, because right now, our public schools rely on renting out their classrooms, their gyms. And if we pull that funding from them for this new community center, where do they look for the money? So.
Mr. Lohman?
Okay, I'll keep it brief. Yes, our community task force has determined that the building is functionally obsolete, and 65% of Bloomington residents have said that they would like to have a community center.
Thank you. Go back to a question for all candidates. What should the city do to help residents and businesses make their homes and workplaces more environmentally friendly, starting with Ms. Carter?
Yes, so I think this is a great question. The first thing that I think we could do is take the recommendation of our Sustainability Committee and start doing more organics recycling. I know that for us personally, it would be helpful if we had a canister at our home for pickup. And then there are also some different things that the city can do to really incentivize businesses and residents to start implementing more energy-efficient energy sources. So for example, there have been people who have wanted to do more solar energy, solar panels on their homes, and have had some trouble. But I do appreciate the work that the city has done. They have a plan, and they have gotten awards for some different green things that they've done. They recently started a Sustainability Commission, and the commission has been doing great work. And they have a youth leader on it, which I think is great because the youth are going to save us. And yes, so I think I'm, did I see the stop sign? Sorry. Oh, okay. I'm good.
Mr. Clemmons?
I think it's important to understand that over time in Bloomington, many of the business owners have wanted to do improvements to their buildings, but have also received some pushback that they're not doing enough improvements. Working with business owners to come up with not only short but long-term plans to allow them to improve their them to improve their, their commercial buildings is, is absolutely necessary. People aren't going to have a million dollars to spend on a building, but they may have $100,000 a year to spend for 10 years. So, um, working with that is going to be very important. Incentivizing people is hard to do in their personal lives, but we need to give everyone every opportunity to try and be more green and, and, and I, I like your idea, by the way, about the composting and stuff, that's... Listen to Jenna. Thank you.
Ms. Galena.
I have to go back to education. A lot of people, I think, are just flummoxed by the idea of, of making changes in their homes or with recycling or whatever. Again, the coffee with a cop idea of getting folks together and giving them ideas, things to read and resources to go to, and perhaps some way of subsidizing their efforts to make life more sustainable.
Thank you. Mr. McClellan.
As many of you know, I have a 10,000-watt solar power plant on top of my house that I installed myself. Took me a day and a half to do it, and one of my friends to help me haul panels up on my roof. It was all plug and play. What I would like to see the city do is I would like to see the city open up the fix-up fund and allow homeowners to tap into the fix-up fund to put solar and renewable energy products on their house. I would also like to see the city allow for a 5% tax incentive for homeowners who do go green. As for businesses, I think that I would like to give small businesses a seat at the table and have them help direct ordinances, removing ordinances that prevent them from going green or make recommendations to the city council as what they believe is best for their business.
Mr. Loman.
Thank you. Well, the first thing is, our city has got to be a model example of what sustainability looks like. Our city in 2018 was recognized as a three-step green city and received a Soul Smart Gold designation recognition of its overall sustainable practices and ease of solar panel installations. Saw an example right there that we talked about earlier here. Not only that, we need to start with youth, folks. Youth people, young folks really are going to be the ones that are going to lead us forward. That's why not only do we have one youth member, but we're in the process of adding an additional young person to our, our program. We've got to be careful about how we, responsible with our tax dollars and how we spend it. That's why we're looking at ways, and we've integrated ways into our HRA program to use our loan program to create sustainable opportunities, not only for our multi-housing units, but also for our single family. There's so many things more that I could tell you about with this.
Thank you. Mr. Nord.
Um, I think education is a big thing on as far as recycling and composting at home. As far as businesses, if there's some tax incentives to get a business to be a little less or a little more energy efficient would be nice. Being a business owner and trying to allocate dollars to change your light fixtures so that the more energy efficient is a huge price tag for a payout that is going to come 10 years down the road, so it's, a tax incentive may help change people's minds on that.
Okay, thank you. I don't honestly know whether this statistic is true, but the question is valid. The average age voter, average age voter for municipal elections is over 50. How would you, or how will you, as you campaign, encourage and increase younger families and voters to engage in voting in municipal elections? And we'll begin with Mr. Nord.
Um, yeah, looking at the voter records, working out the walking list and everything, you'd see that older voters are the only ones that tend to vote in primaries, so it's very hard to get the young people out to vote. I do have a lot of friends that live in Bloomington, so I've been tapping into them, trying to get them more engaged in the voting. It's participation, and it's just walking around, talking to people, trying to get them out is about all we can do.
Thank you. Mr. McClellan.
I do agree with that sentiment that the average voter age in Bloomington is 65 years old, and I think that we have to do a better job educating the public, starting in our schools, on the importance of civic engagement at the local level, because the local level is what affects people's lives more than anything. So we have to educate our, our children in the schools on that. We could launch a campaign that also did that. I, I would also re- echo ranked choice voting. That's another good way to get more buy-in from the community, especially younger voters.
Thank you. Mr. Loman.
Thank you. Well, we've had a number of initiatives in the city of Bloomington around this idea of, of getting young people involved. Our Bloomington Learn to Lead program, we had for several years in a row mentoring with young folks so they could understand what it's like to be in government. And so I served as a mentor in both of those programs, but we simply need to do more, and that is working along with the League of Women Voters and other organizations to make sure that, that voting is a priority. Also, what we have done is we have partnered along with the Bloomington Public Schools, meeting quarterly to try to make sure that that is a priority. I think it's important that when we, as, as public leaders, take that opportunity to make sure that young people are a part of every process that we're a part of. As a founding member of the Sustainable Commission, that's one thing that I did to make sure that we had young people as a part of that process. It's not about just getting them to vote. It's also getting them involved in all of the processes that we do. You can't start with voting. You've got to get them involved in everything that we do. Thank you.
Mr. Clemmons.
Yeah, when you talk about the statistic, we, we need to keep in mind the large number of kids that are of voting age that are away at school and college during the time of the election, so I would think that working to increase the participation in the absentee voter process would probably be helpful for that. Obviously, you know, to get community engagement out of people, you have to make them care about something, and you have to make them believe that they can make a difference, and that's a hard thing to do, but, um, you know, asking for more volunteerism to help at the city level from those age kids would probably be a good place to get them started being part of their community, and also reaching out to engage in organizations within the community that are of that age range, things that the city can do to just try and make them feel that they're part of the process. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Galena.
Free burgers at McDonald's for every vote.
I think that's called bribery.
Oh, darn. Finding a way to increase awareness of, of young people, singles, married, young couples with children that tend to live more in apartments or kind, group kinds of setting, get out with signs. Just remember to vote. Don't say, it doesn't necessarily have to be vote for me. Remember to vote and give them the dates, and the awareness will increase over time, I would hope.
Thank you. Ms. Carter.
Yeah, so I do appreciate the work that the city has been doing to raise awareness. You know, in the local Bloomington Bulletin that we just got, the whole back page was around voting options and the primary and, and how you can vote absentee or early, and I think that we need to continue to do things like that, communicate, communicate, communicate. But we also need to make sure that those resources are available in multiple languages because we do have a lot of people in Bloomington that, where English may not be their first language. I think it would be great to take lessons from the League of Women Voters Bloomington and maybe hire some youth interns with our city clerk office and do some voter registration drives and increase awareness among families. I also like what Clem said about really starting to relate our local issues, the impact that they have on people's lives, and the impact that the city council has on our life and the city has on our life, because I don't think that a lot of people are aware. You know, when people ask me why I'm running and I start to talk about why I am, transportation and housing and things like that, they're surprised that the city has so much influence on all of these things.
Thank you. I'm going to throw in one more lightning round question that should have no more than about three words as an answer, because it's just a topic, okay? What is your personal most important redevelopment priority for Bloomington? We've taught, you've talked tonight about, you know, older places and traffic problems and so on and so forth. You personally, which one thing would you start off focusing on, beginning with Ms. Galena?
Community center.
Thank you. Ms. Carter.
Reinvestment in our neighborhood nodes that include transit-oriented development and housing.
Thank you.
Mr. Clemmons.
The east side of Bloomington.
Thank you.
Mr. Loman.
Our neighborhood gateway ordinance.
Okay. Mr. Nord.
Um, probably the area around between 98th and Lyndale to 94th could use some upgrades.
Thank you.
Mr. McClellan.
Creating a downtown Bloomington on 98th and Lyndale.
What can or should the city do about vacant and rundown properties and absentee landlords? Ms. Galena.
There's a house that's been razed on Old Shakopee and Xerxes, I think. I have no idea how that came to be done. I got to pass on this one.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Carter.
So what should the city do about rundown?
Rundown properties, and they're linking that to absentee landlords, and I'm not, I would guess the two probably do go together.
So in my door-knocking in some neighborhoods, I have heard concerns around specific rental properties and their landlords who may not actually even live in Minnesota anymore, and that the properties aren't well-maintained, and right now, what I, my understanding is that the city has a kind of neighborhood or a neighbor complaint system, where if you're having an issue, then you would call the city as a neighbor. And so I believe that if we had a system in place where people could, you know, not only just rely on this city, I mean, that this complaint system, but actually have a process in place where the city is monitoring the actions of landlords and making sure that they're properly maintaining their properties, and taking resident complaints, tenant complaints very seriously, too. I will say that I always like the carrot versus the stick, so the more that we can make it clear with landlords upfront that, you know, tenants have rights and that their rights cannot be violated, they need good living conditions, that that's the best approach.
Thank you. Mr. Clemmons.
Uh, yeah, as a property owner and a landlord in town, I can tell you that there are times where I've gotten a phone call that said, hey, the lawn needs to get mowed at one of your properties. And I can tell you that the response to that is, is very quick and very easy. I love the complaint system. It's anonymous, people can call. It's hard to get to every property you have, to be honest with you, but the other half of this problem isn't about landlords. It's about, you talk about affordable housing, and you want to make sure there is affordable housing, but the upkeep of an affordable house costs a lot of money as well. Encouraging people to use that Bloomington fix-up fund, okay, perhaps finding some qualified contractors that are willing to do some work to help with the city. There's some other ways we can do this to get people to help make our city look beautiful again, and it doesn't necessarily have to be by getting someone in trouble, it can be by giving someone a hand up.
Thank you. Mr. Nord.
Um, as far as landlords, I think they should be held accountable for anything on their properties or towards their renters. Rundown properties, I'm a pretty big proponent of private property rights, and as long as the property's not in disrepair, it should be just left. If it's causing, you know, if they're not up keeping their lawn mowed and, and it's, the windows are broken and everything, then the city should probably step in and do something.
Mr. McClellan.
I believe that the community should come together to help solve the challenge and figure out what's going on, because for all we know, it could be a senior in a home that can't get around, or it could be a, a property that is vacant, and maybe the city does need to come in and, and, and look into that issue. But we, we have National Night Out here, and it's a good opportunity for the community to figure out what's going on in their community and ask questions and work with their, their neighbors and come up with solutions.
Thank you. Mr. Loman.
Thank you. Now, certainly, we have the neighborhood process that folks can use, but we also have the environmental health that goes around the entire city and reviews the city, and they do that in partnership with our new outreach and engagement program that does sort of what one of my other opponents talks about, making sure that we are, 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 that the people that are in those circumstances are able to, you know, get right with the situation. In addition to that, with these rundown neighborhoods, we also have what's called the HRA. HRA has certain loans that are directed towards these particular things. As a part of our NOAA ordinance that we passed, we passed some ordinance dollars for that, for helping with these particular situations, and also as a part of our Opportunity Housing ordinances, we also put together processes by which that we can invest in, for, for those folks who own properties to be able to, to upsize their homes. It's very difficult in one minute to talk about the many pieces of ordinances that we have done over to specifically address them, and there's a stop sign, I got to stop.
Thank you. You've talked a lot tonight, all of you, about fiscal responsibility. I'm not sure anybody used the word taxes, which of course has become, granted it's five letters, but it's become a rather dirty word in our society, so here's a question. For what reasons should Bloomington consider a raise in taxes, beginning with Ms. Carter?
So, excuse me, um, you know, I think that based on everything I've seen in the city budget documents, the communications that we have received as residents, the city of Bloomington has done a really great job managing its resources and its budget. It's clear about its priorities. The 2018 third-party audit just came back and was squeaky clean. We still have some of the lowest tax rates in the metro area, so overall, I applaud the city, and I think we need to continue down that path, because we do get very great city services, and we live in a tremendous, a tremendous city. It's amazing. I think that we do have a lot of capital improvement projects, like our fire stations, that really need some investments, and it may come down to needing more resources, and so that could see as an area where we would need to prioritize. I do think that, you know, our public safety is one of our top priorities as a city, and we need to make sure that those are, those sectors, the fire department and the police are getting the resources that they need.
Thank you. Mr. Clemmons.
Um, I've made my living as a business process efficiency expert, and many of that time was spent with local governments and housing authorities. I, I love how low the taxes are in Bloomington. I don't think we need to raise them. I think that there's some things that can be done internally to streamline processes, to, you know, connect information from different departments so that people aren't re-engaging in an issue that's already been taken care of. One example would be when I apply for a housing permit, the inspectors in the housing permit, the two desks don't talk to each other, they use different systems. So although I put my property manager on one form, they call me to do the inspection rather than the property manager because they don't use the same system. That seems inefficient. It seems like there's some improvements that could happen, and I would rather see improvements happen within the city than raising taxes. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Galena.
I think it's unrealistic to expect that taxes won't increase. Everything increases. If we want to continue to have a balanced budget and to be able to take care of the projects that we've all looked at tonight, it's probably going to take an increase in taxes. I'm not happy, I'm sure you wouldn't be happy, but I think it might be a fact of life.
Thank you. Mr. Nord.
Um, I would be very against raising any taxes. I think the efficiency of government could probably be improved, but to raise the taxes is, that would go against my core values.
Thank you. Mr. McClellan.
I believe that we need to create a more efficient system. I believe that we need to work with existing partners at the county, state level, and we need to leverage our position to keep taxes down, and in addition to that, I would also echo Jenna's sentiments. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Loman.
In 2019, a comparison of the seven county peer communities with more than 20,000 residents, low monthly costs of city services for a single-family home in Bloomington ranked second lowest at $80.99 a month. We have been award, we are an award-winning city when it comes to our three ratings from the bond agencies. We're the only city in the entire state of Minnesota in 2018 with that designation. So we have been incredibly fiscally responsible. Now, when it comes to... Now, when it comes to answering this question, certainly, we have to look at how do we want to create a community of choice? And I think that the city council has laid that out. It's about community image, it's about equity inclusion, community amenities, high-quality services experiences, focused renewal, renewal and sustainability. And I think that's the prism by which that we have to do that. We have to strike a balance between keeping our taxes as low as possible and great services.
Thank you. There's been a lot of investigative reporting recently about the homeless problem, and the fact that homelessness is not just an issue in the inner city, it is an issue in the suburbs as well. That means that most likely Bloomington has homeless adults and homeless children. What should the city do to help? We begin with Mr. Nord.
Sadly, most homelessness is caused by drug addiction, and so the only thing the city could do is try to make, reach out to those people and get them some help into a rehab situation, and if they have children, maybe somehow give them some subsidized housing to get those children off the street. But drug addiction is a horrible thing, and it's hard to just stop it. Most people that are homeless just continue their ways, and they got to learn to help themselves.
Mr. McClellan?
I would say that I would disagree with you. I was homeless at the age of 15, and it wasn't because of drugs, or gangs, or anything like that. It was because my parents died, and I didn't have a place to go. For the past 10 years, we have talked about homeless youth, and to me, it's just a buzzword. I believe it's about priority and setting the priorities and solving the problem. When we can spend $7.5 million on a contract for a water park over homeless youth, something's really wrong, and we need to fix it. And I will do that if I'm elected.
Mr. Lohman?
Homelessness certainly is a very serious topic in the city of Bloomington. This is an issue that cannot be solved simply by the city. We need to partner along with Hennepin County and with the state. In fact, the most, a lot of folks who are homeless in the city, over 50%, are young children and women. And so, every year, I have had the opportunity to be a speaker at the Oasis for Youth program, and we are working on ways in which, concretely, to, to make safe spaces for those folks who are homeless in our city, whether it be at Oasis over, in my district, or over at the Mall of America. We certainly are looking to do more items, to do more things with this homelessness topic, and our youth are leading the way. And we certainly have put several dollars towards this particular issue, but we've got to partner.
Thank you. Mr. Clemmons?
Yeah, it's a scary thing, right? You, you don't know how someone got there, and you don't know who they are, and, and you see someone sitting there with a sign asking you for a dollar, right? Situations that happen throughout people's lives send them in directions that we most likely will never understand, but to partner with Hennepin County, you know, the human services in, in the state of Minnesota are doled out at the county level, and, and one of 12 states in the nation that do that. Working with Hennepin County to, and our police probably, and, and, and other emergency services, so I'd be able to identify, some training to identify who these folks might be, as well as get them some help if they should want it, I think is a key priority and something that the city should at least be looking into. I know that they've done a lot and put a lot of effort toward it, but as always, we can always do a little more. Thanks.
Ms. Galena?
When I worked at Veep, oftentimes people would come in asking for bus tokens, in the days of bus tokens, or food, or a couple nights' housing, and I had a million resources that I could suggest to them, but because of shame, or mental health issues, or whatever it was, they would oftentimes decline, and that just broke my heart because there was help available. I guess what I would recommend, probably at the Hennepin County level, is outreach workers. Go where they are, ride the, the trains and whatever, and see if you can make some dent and gain some trust to help those people back into the regular, hopefully regular world.
Thank you. Ms. Carter?
So this is actually one of, a really big reason why I decided to run for office. So in Bloomington, over the past five years, we've seen a significant increase in the number of students who are homeless in our school district. At the end of the 2019 school year, there were over 300 students. So, it is a complicated issue, it takes a comprehensive approach. I, we have to be talking to families and students who are experiencing homelessness, bringing them in to be part of the solution, because it is, it's issues around mental health, it's issues, I mean, there are people who, I've talked with pastors and I've talked with tenants in our community, who are working so hard, they're working one, two, three jobs per household, and they can't afford to rent a two-bedroom in Bloomington. People are being evicted from their apartments over being short $50 on rent, and that stays on your record for a long time. So we need to take a comprehensive approach, we need to engage with the community, we need to listen to people who are experiencing these issues, and then collaborate with the county and others to really start to address this problem, because it's a crisis, and it's not about drugs.
Thank you. All cities and suburbs are facing the issue of changing retail. I know that for the most part, I only shop online now, and that's not good for Southdale and the Galleria in Edina. I'm sure Bloomington is facing that as well. What should the city council do, if anything, about vacated retail spaces in Bloomington? And we'll start with Mr. Lohman.
Well, what are we already doing, really, with this particular item? I mentioned earlier, our neighborhood zones, ordinance that we put together, within that particular ordinance, we are, are going to use a variety of federal, state, local and county dollars to really reinvigorate the central part of our city. Basically, it's all the way from 102nd Street all the way north to 90th Street, all the way over to Old Chocopee Road, so all of those, those business nodes that are struggling, we're going to find creative ways in which to, to revitalize those. We recognize that, that we are seeing a change with, with shopping. So we're not going to be able to continue to have those, those shopping malls the way they're currently constructed. What we're going to really have to do is transform them into, into different ways to utilize that program. So that's what we're doing, and we know that that's got to be one of our top priorities, and that's why we've worked to, to move that forward, and we're already starting to see results.
Thank you. Mr. McClellan?
I believe that we should try to repurpose those buildings into affordable housing. I, I believe, one of the places that I talk about a lot is Herburgers and Toys R Us, which is on a, a main transportation line, and we could utilize those spaces, we could work with Hennepin County and state officials to get funding to be able to do some of these projects, and that's what I would like to see. I would like to see us, you know, reuse these, turn these properties into something useful that would help solve a problem that we have, priorities.
Thank you. Mr. Nord?
Well, I don't like to shop, so... But, yeah, the, the climate for shopping malls is going to be changing greatly. I, the, what you're going to do with those buildings, as far as, if you could repurpose them, I don't see how that would be even possible. You would have to raise them and build new buildings. But, it's a, without being in the know on the city council, as like Mr. Lohman is right now, I don't have a great answer for you right now.
Thank you. Ms. Carter?
Yeah, so I think this is an opportunity for the city and the residents together to be creative and innovative about how we can reimagine these spaces. I know in my experience knocking on doors and even get on any of the social media, Facebook groups, people want places to go, they want to support small businesses, they want locally-owned res, non-chain restaurants, they want breweries and taprooms, they want vibrant places to be together, and so we need to figure out how to make that happen, and it does sound like the community or the city is moving down that road. I have talked with the Director of Development, he's a relatively new staff person in Bloomington that's bringing lots of really good ideas, and, you know, we talked a lot about how there are some, there are some ordinances and zoning issues that, that, that create barriers for developers and small business owners who want to come into Bloomington. They look at Bloomington, and then they see what we have, and they go locate in Edina and other places. And so we need to make sure that we're looking at those outdated ordinances and zoning requirements and make sure that we can meet the needs of small businesses and developers.
Ms. Galena?
I'm very intrigued with what Edina is doing at Southdale. The building that was, many things, Herburgers, I think, is going to be the Southdale Hennepin County Library. What a wonderful way to get people in, going to the library, and while they're there, maybe they should stop at Kohl's or some of the other shops there. And I'm wondering if that kind of thing might work in Bloomington, bringing people together with a, a focus other than retail.
Thank you. Mr. Clemmons?
Bloomington as a whole is over-retailed for its population, and it's been that way for years. There's just, there's too many shops to support, that, there's not enough population to support the number of shops. When we talk about building a community center, that's why it kills me, we're talking about doing it at Valley View Park. Why let's tear a park out when we have a bunch of empty shopping malls? Let's identify one of those locations, work with the owners, and figure out if there's a way we could collaborate to build the community center in a blighted, empty site in Bloomington. You know, it's, it's easy to talk about doing these things, and it's another thing to get them done, but I, too, have talked with Eric Johnson, and they make, the city of Bloomington made a heck of a hire with Eric Johnson, he's awesome, and I have no doubt that partnering with him, we can get some great things done.
Thank you. We will now move to candidates' closing statements. They get one minute to close things up, and we will start with Mr. Lohman.
Creating a community of choice this evening and in the future is going to require an important investment in redevelopment. Our neighborhood gateway project that we have, that we've passed already, takes the center of our city and transformed it, and makes it equal with the rest of the districts that we have. Bloomington is, in a sense, in transition, and I believe that through our strategic priorities over the last six years, we have made Bloomington a great place to live. When you look at our award-winning water, with our award-winning plows, our services are second to none. Our management of our fiscal responsibility going into the future with so many changes needing to be made with the infrastructure is going to be incredibly important. I ask for you, for your support, and if you'd like to learn more about my, my candidacy, please check out my website at dwainalohman.com. Our best days are ahead of us. The sun is rising, and our best days lie ahead of us.
Thank you. Mr. McClellan?
I want to thank the League of Women Voters again tonight for putting on this forum. This election is about meeting the people of Bloomington where they are at in life, and uplifting them, and the communities in which they live, and not tearing people down or putting barriers in the way. It's about keeping promises. It is not about putting a political agenda ahead of real needs. It's about serving the community by having a vision and leading. As a firefighter, I've worked with some amazing people, I've seen and done some amazing things. Once you've earned the title of firefighter, it means something. It means that I will be there for you on your worst day, it means that I will protect you and your families and fight for you and our communities, no matter the personal cost. It means keeping a strong character in the face of weak ones and doing what's right, and creating a future where we all succeed together. I ask you for your vote in this primary on August 13th. You can also vote early tomorrow here at City Hall. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Nord?
I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for putting on this forum. I look forward to working with the city council. I want to be the voice of the working-class people to get the things that, that you're talking with your friends and neighbors about all the time, and everyone says, why is the city doing this, or why is the city doing that? But nobody ever wants to do anything about it, so I'm trying to step up and be the voice for those people. So, we really need to get out to vote, so please talk to your friends, neighbors, and get them to vote in the primary for me, and, thank you very much.
Ms. Carter?
So, thank you all for coming out tonight, for being engaged residents. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for organizing this opportunity again, and I want to end with my top three priorities. First, I am committed to a community where every single person living here, our kids, our seniors, can live healthy lives and can thrive. That means we need affordable housing, we need a safe transportation system, we need clean and vibrant parks, and we need livable wage jobs. My second priority is reinvestment and redevelopment in our neighborhood corridors. 494 and South Loop, that's been great, and now we need to pay attention in the internal parts of our city. And my third priority is listening and learning from the residents of Bloomington. I want to be your biggest advocate on the city council, at the county level, at the state, at the federal level, at the Met Council. So I want to wrap it up, I want to ask you explicitly for your vote on August 13th, or any time, but in early voting, and also in the general election. If you want more information, you can visit my website at jennacartermn.com, and again, thank you all so much.
Ms. Galena?
There will always be issues that have to be resolved within our city, the pros and the cons, the yeses and the noes. I promise to address each issue facing the Bloomington City Council with an open mind and the willingness to do the work needed to determine what is best for the city of Bloomington. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Clemmons?
That'd be me?
Yeah, that'd be you.
Got it, thanks. You know, I, I got to say, there's a lot of polish up here, and I don't have as much as some of these other folks do, and, and there's a lot of power behind a lot of the people up here as well. I, I'm a guy from Bloomington, I love Bloomington, and I can tell you that for all the talking that we've done, you know, action is more important to me. I, I actively fix up houses in Bloomington and offer them, and some of those are affordable units. I'm working on redevelopment projects in town here that include building apartment buildings with affordable units, but it has to be done in balance. Our transportation, we need bikes, yes we do, but we have to do it in a way that is safe for people and allows people to get around, and so as much as someone may be on the far left or the far right, I think that we all end up in the middle, are a little bit unhappy with what ends up, we're probably in the best place it needs to be. I'm going to try and keep Bloomington nonpartisan, and I'm going to try and get a few things done. Thank you.
I want to thank the candidates for participating in this forum, and mostly for your willingness to participate in the democratic process by running for office. Teddy Roosevelt said, "You shouldn't judge anyone unless they were willing to put themselves in the arena as you are doing." Let's now give them a good round of applause. Thank you again to the League of Women Voters of Bloomington for sponsoring this forum. Remember that it has been video-recorded, can be viewed online at the LWV Bloomington website, at the city website, and on YouTube. Tell all your neighbors who didn't come. It will be rebroadcast frequently on Bloomington Cable TV until August 13th, the primary election. And thanks to you, the audience, for making the effort to be informed voters and coming to tonight's forum. That concludes the forum.